Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this beautiful evening, beautiful evening. Uh, we have a planned board meeting. Now, we're gonna open the public conference. Okay, so we have Stewarts, is that good tonight?
And maybe since we've had some people on the public hearing, you just say what happens. Oh yeah, sort of define what you really want to do.
Okay, I would just recommend. Okay, perfect. Open the public to comments. Alright, so we're going to begin with the presentation by Chuck Marshall from Stewarts. And then after Chuck has had a chance to present and the planning board is able to ask some questions, then we'll open it up to the public for comments and questions, if that's okay. So, public, please hold your comments and questions until we invite you. Can I approach you now?
How's that going?
Yes. So, um, what I'm gonna do is, in response to the February...
And you are...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Chuck Marshall.
We don't know who you are, but...
No, I'm Chuck Marshall. A lot of them know who I am too. Um, I'm Chuck Marshall from Stewarts. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, in response to the February appearance, I submitted a March 4 document that outlined the changes from the originally submitted plan to the plans you see before you. What I'd like to do is just walk through those, then answer any questions the board may have. Um, with me tonight is Mark McAlney, earthquake managing engineering. As you know, in 2017, I believe it was, earthquake managing did the traffic study. And Mark's gonna walk the board and public through that. And again, answer any questions that may arise. Before I go through the submission, I do wanna address one thing. There was some work at Stewarts done this week. That work was in compliance with our DEC Petroleum Bulk Storage Regulation. That was not, you know, work to circumvent this approval or any other, an inability to build it or anything like that. It was literally some concrete work associated with our public tank manholes. And then, um, we had an abandoned tank, and it was permanently abandoned, so we had to fill that with concrete. So, um, I know that there was some, you know, public attention brought to it, so I don't want anyone to think that we're doing anything outside this approval or circumventing this approval. So, the first, probably the most significant change was, um, we did switch to the two-story flat-roofed building. Um, the building will stay approximately 3700 square feet. There will be entrances on both Fairview and one facing Green Street. The one facing Green Street will be interior to the tanks or to the gasoline canopy. We did stay with the flat-roof gasoline canopy. As far as sheet S2 goes, um, we did continue the concrete through the driveways as requested by the board, and will install ADA rampings at both ends of both driveways. In compliance with the requirements, um, we did provide, in sheet S3, we did provide spot elevation for grading plan. Um, and then on the back of your letter, we did provide a sample of what the VersaLock retaining wall would look like. Um, so in essence, it goes from approximately a four-foot wall to a seven... eight, you know, eight-foot wall, um, to the, what would be the northeast.
Chuck, excuse me, is that eight feet, um, including the arborium? Or is it an eight-foot wall?
It's an eight-foot wall.
On top of the arborium?
So, the arborium don't count in the top-of-wall calculation? So, you're, on S3, you have a bottom of... So, like, in this part of S3, just to give you an example, it has BW 170.4, TW 170.92. Um, in that spot, it would be a 8.5, 8 and 1/2-foot wall. Um, on sheet S4, uh, we do show plantings, again, on both sides of the proposed driveway. Um, we do have grass, or the ability to put grass on the outside of the curving. And then, the major change was the installation of the row of arborium. So, that row doesn't count into the elevation we were just talking about. Um, and as you remember, we had previously proposed a four-foot vinyl fence that would shield the headlights, and this was to provide some vertical screening to the housing along route. The next change was on the lighting plan, sheet S5, which was...
Is there a taller these trees that are, or these bushes that are on the corners? Are they tall, like, blocking the sightlines with turning in and out and around the corner?
I don't think that they would have, um, canopy restrictions. They should, you're right, that you should be able to see them under the canopy. So, those would be hedge maples, so they're three and a half inches in top. That's something I can check, but I think that you should have a kind of canopy to see underneath them. So, that's something I can answer. Um, and then in sheet S5, again, the only substantive change was the light facing down Green Street was removed. Um, and the only light, only yard light that remains is the light interior to the driveway, so you can, you can see it. We provided the turning movements for the gasoline delivery. Um, this does show that we're requesting a full access driveway on both sides. Um, and the reason being, the truck will come in off Green, circulate, drop fuel on the passenger side, and then continue out Fairview. Um, one of the points that came up at the February meeting that's obviously critical, DOT, through their county permit coordinator, perceived this project to be only a sidewalk replacement, so did not envision that the department would be involved. Um, and has since indicated that they will be involved. Um, today, that they, they sent an email to myself copying the chairman's, indicating they would like a restricted access on Fairview. Um, because of the truck turning movement, we're gonna work with them on what that restriction will be. Um, because we do have to get the truck in and out. And I don't know if that means trying to maneuver the truck around the site in a different capacity or, um, mountable curving on the Fairview side. So, that is one thing that we're gonna have to work with the department on. Um, the second thing, which we discussed, is a stormwater situation. And those two things are outside, you know, those are the department's considerations. So, outside this board, um, they will kinda give guidance on what the access configuration will be. Another point that has come up, um, and the chairman brought it up, and then it was subsequently brought up by another individual, this curb island, um, or, right now, it's just a striped island, but making it a delineated curb island. Um, because that's in their roadway network, it would be their control.
They being DOT?
They being DOT. So, in their original correspondence with us, they had indicated that they were not gonna have permit jurisdiction, but have since indicated that they'll have jurisdiction of anything between the sidewalks.
Between the sidewalk and what?
Between the sidewalks.
Between the sidewalk?
So, on, like, on Fairview, between the sidewalks and then... So, basically, just anything that's in the intersection or the roadway. However, previously, we did not anticipate them being involved.
And Chuck, did they give you any indication of whether they would actually let us know, just let you know, let us know what their plans are, what any restrictions might be?
Um, we have to submit the traffic study and the feeling... They asked for some information, um, so they requested right in, right out. Um, but with the truck and mountable curving, we have to see what ultimately that ends up being.
I have a digital question, I'll just then... If, if the DOT requires something that in some way changes, you know, your, your plans, then I would assume that, that, that that has to come back to us?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't, I think the general hope or sense would be that potentially by, you know, call it next month, um, we'll have some definitive answers from them about the access configuration and the stormwater. Um, excuse me, acknowledging that those are overhanging issues for the site plan and this board's consideration. Um, but again, we didn't envision their participation until two weeks ago. So, normally, would have filed, you know, simultaneously, the initial site plan here, we would have filed the DOT, and that didn't happen because they had previously indicated they weren't gonna participate.
Well, in the same lines, it seems like we can't, we talked about last time too, um, the notion of boosting pedestrian access and the intersection?
Yes, so, the pedestrian access, uh, the curb island, those are, are kinda what we're calling off-site improvements, um, because they're not, you know, they are contiguous to our site, but they're not, um, you know, they're not something we could do whole-handedly. Um, we don't control the city's pedestrian, the signal. Um, I believe the city owns the poles and the signal, but it's DOT's intersection, so there's a little bit of a... Mark will go through the signalization and the level service analysis, things like that. Um, and again, the pedestrian accommodation is something that we've committed to and remain committed to. Um, the issue is the mechanism to get there. So, we previously agreed to do a host community benefit for off-site mitigation, and that pedestrian accommodation will be in that mitigation.
But any point, is that the DOT is not involved opening up that issue as well?
I don't think, from, again, from, uh, I'll let Mark, he's more an expert than I. Um, DOT will get involved in the signal?
Yeah, if they own the signal, then they have to get involved, but I'm sure.
Yeah, so, we'll have to deal with the, I mean, yeah. DOT will ultimately weigh in on the signalization and, you know, pedestrian phasing, if there's a dedicated pedestrian phase, or how those crosswalks work though. And then, the only other thing that we've provided were miscellaneous detailed sheets that had, you know, lights, uh, the wall detail, um, and that's it. And some of that information was provided on the back of your cover letter. So, with that, I'll ask you any questions you have, or can I have Mark go through his presentation?
How do you guys wanna do it? Should we ask Mark to do the presentation, and then you add any last final questions, and then I'll give it up to the public?
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna come up here, the only spot I could really, I've got some visuals here that hopefully will, you know, address some of your questions. Um, my name is Mark McAlney, I'm a associate and a project manager at earthquake managing engineering, and Stewarts had contacted us to conduct the traffic assessment for the, for the project. I'll just, can't make it any bigger due to the constraints of the room here. Um, just gonna walk you through some of the process of the traffic study that we've conducted to date. Um, the first thing we did was identify the project location. We've got the existing Stewarts on the corner here, Green Street, Fairview Ave. And we looked at the adjacent traffic signal, just do the location of the, of the, of the existing driveways and the proposed driveways in close proximity to that signal. So, the first thing that we went out and typically do in a traffic study is go out and collect existing information about the intersections and about the adjacent roadways. And what we typically focus on with the traffic study, I'm not sure how many, uh, how many studies that the city has reviewed, you focus on the worst-case morning and afternoon peak commuter times. And that typically occurs between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, and 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. That's when there's the most traffic. So, if you can establish that the project will work adequately during those times, you can then make a conclusion that it'll work adequately the other 22 hours of the day. So, we typically focus on those morning and afternoon commuter peaks. It's also the peaks of the, of the Stewarts, just because of the nature of getting gas to and from work, uh, and, and the convenience portion of, of that site. Uh, we did look at the one signalized intersection, and there's three driveways associated with the site. Uh, there's one on Green Street, and there's sort of two on, on Fairview Ave. We're recommending consolidating the two on Fairview Ave. It's, it's good access management, so you minimize the number of conflict points that people have entering and exiting the development. We're also going to relocate the driveway on Green Street as far away from the signalized intersection as we can, again, in order to improve the access on Green Street. We did review and observe pedestrians when we were out in the field, in addition to transit. Uh, Columbia County does have a shopping stop, a shopping shuttle stop, just adjacent to the site. They'll have, uh, Stewarts will have to kinda work with, uh, Columbia County Public Transit to relocate that stop, because it's essentially where the new driveway's gonna go. Um, and then, in terms of volume development, what we do is we go out and actually count every, every vehicle entering and exiting that intersection, the signalized intersection and also the driveways during those peak commuter times. And then we focus in on the worst-case out. So, we, we count from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning. If the worst-case hour occurs from 7:30 to 8:30, those are the, those are the time periods that we look at in terms of, of traffic volumes for the morning. And then for the PM, say it occurs between 4:30 and 5:30, we focus on those worst-case time periods. Um, from there, we also then look at just general background growth in the area. How has traffic behaved in the area over the, over the last few several years? Because we know that in general, traffic will continue to increase. Uh, and based on a review of DOT volumes that are available on their website, it's, uh, you know, traffic volumes have increased approximately a half percent per year over the last several years. So, we then increased our traffic volume by a half percent to our bill year. And then we also contacted the city planning department to see if there's any other developments in the area that would impact traffic. And there was one, uh, apartment development located a couple miles north on Fairview Ave that we included traffic associated with that development as well. So, we took into account all known traffic. So, what we essentially do is we determine our design year, figure out how traffic is gonna operate in that design year without Stewarts, and how traffic will operate in that design year with the, the expansion of Stewarts. And the way we do that is we, um, we do, we conduct something called a trip generation assessment, meaning we wanna know how much traffic the expansion is going to generate during those peak times. And the way we do that is, since we counted the existing driveways, we know how much traffic the existing, uh, building is generating during those peak times. We know that, for instance, the existing Stewarts is generating 94 trips during the AM peak hour and 88 trips during the PMP hour. We know that because we counted the driveways. We know how much traffic is entering and exiting that development. And based on that, those rates of the square footage, we can then apply that rate to the new square footage of, of the expansion to say, well, if it's generating 94 trips now and 88 trips now, we, we can anticipate it'll generate an additional 64 trips in the morning and additional 60 trips in the afternoon. However, you also have to be aware that a Stewarts in a convenience market like this doesn't generate new traffic the way that an office would generate new traffic, because it typically pulls traffic from the existing network. It's called pass-by traffic. So, most of the people here, on the way to work, they make a stop for their coffee or to get gas. So, they're already gonna pass the site anyways. They're not a new trip on the network. They may be a new trip as a turn into the site, but it's not a new trip into the network. So, based on traffic standards, we know that in general, convenience markets with gas have approximately 60 to 65% pass-by rate. So, even though there may be 64 new, new trips and 60, uh, new trips in entering and exiting the development in the morning and the afternoon, some, most of those trips are already on the network. It's just maybe the, the store's a little more attractive, it's got a better, you know, ice cream sundae spa, so that someone on the way home from work may grab, uh, ice cream for their family on the way home, where they may not have done that before. So, and when it's all said and done, we're anticipating that there, the site might actually generate approximately 26 new AM, PM, peak hour trips and approximately 20 PM peak hour trips. Those are new trips that say, right now, someone may not go to this Stewarts because it's a smaller Stewarts, while it's a bigger Stewarts now, it's a little bit nicer. They'll, they'll rather go to this Stewarts than a, than a different convenience market. So, you may pull traffic from other parts of the, of the city. So, then we, then distribute that traffic onto the roadway network based on the observations we already made. So, since we know how much traffic is entering and exiting the existing Stewarts, we know generally what directions that traffic is coming in. We distribute that onto the network, add it to our design year. We've got a sort of before-and-after scenario for, for traffic volumes. And then what we do from there is, we have models that we can actually model these intersections, and it tells us how much delay, how much delay a, a user will experience as they travel through that intersection and trying to get out of the development. Um, and it's based, just, just like you would get a grade in school, you get an A through an F. A is obviously very good delay, you know, 10 or fewer seconds. And then F is, you're waiting there over 80 seconds at a signal or over 50 seconds at a non-signalized intersection. So, you're getting a, almost like a letter grade, as you will, that the intersections are in terms of delay. So, in terms of the intersection, the signalized intersection, uh, due to the, the, the layout of the driveways, we're only anticipating maybe 25% of the traffic is actually gonna get to the signalized intersection, because you've got a lot of the traffic, about, currently, about 35%, 30% of the traffic is coming down Green Street, entering into the development, and then coming right back up Green Street. So, they're not actually even getting to the signalized intersection. Same thing on Fairview. You've got about 45% of the existing traffic entering in off of Fairview and then exiting out of Fairview. So, that traffic, traffic is not even getting into the signal. Only about 25% of it is getting to the signal. Currently, based on the amount of traffic that, that the intersection currently experiences, it operates at a level Service C overall. Some of the movements operate at D or around a D or better. But overall, it operates at a level Service C, and it'll continue to operate at similar operating conditions after the increase of those 20 to 26 trips, of which only 25%, 25% make it to this intersection. So, we're not increasing traffic at this intersection a great deal. Um, in terms of the worst, some of the worst-case moves are, you know, this Green Street Southbound Left Turn. Again, this is operating at a level Service C. This Fairview Ave, sort of through left, again, operating at a level Service C. So, it's not a failing intersection. It's not operating very efficiently, just due to the antiquated nature of the signal, but it's not failing. So, in terms of the amount of traffic we're, we're gonna add here, it's not going to all of a sudden have this, this intersection fail, because we're not gonna be increasing traffic a great deal at this location. We also looked at the driveways. So, again, like I said, about 30% of the traffic is not even getting into the signalized intersection. About approximately 10% of it will kinda come, filter through the intersection and make the right or left turn out. And again, this driveway, based on our, our estimates, you're gonna wait about 15 to 20 seconds to exit, it's a level Service B. Um, if it's gonna be unsignalized, we're gonna relocate it. Right now, it's a little closer to the intersection. We're gonna move it a little bit farther to the west. Um, the other intersection, again, a lot of that traffic, 45% of it is just coming to and from the north here on Fairview Ave. It's not even, not even get to the signalized intersection. Again, uh, this operates at a little, a little longer delay, level Service C, more in the 20 to 25-second range in order to get out on average. Of course, if there's queuing that occurs at this traffic signal, people trying to make the left turn out of here have to wait a little bit longer, and maybe they have to wait 40 seconds. But, you know, if, if, you know, someone right behind them may only have to wait 10 seconds because they, they hit a gap. So, on average, they're at, they're waiting, you know, 20, approximately 20 seconds to get out. Um, some of the other things we looked at was the available site distance from the driveways. The driveway on Green Street, looking to the right, there is some on-street parking that you have to contend with, but just like any other driveway in the city, you have to sort of pull out a little bit to see around that on-street parking. I mean, the city could potentially restrict a little bit of parking there to, to increase sightlines, but it's really not that bad of an issue, because the speeds on Green Street are only approximately 30 miles an hour. Uh, Fairview Ave, right now, there's this existing shrubs and tree associated with the adjacent residential building that will be removed as part of this project. So, right now, it's currently limiting, uh, site distance looking to the left on Fairview from that driveway, but that'll be removed with the proposed project. And I know Chuck had talked about adding some landscaping adjacent to the driveways, but we wanna make sure that that's low enough to where someone pulls out does not, it does not impede their view in the site triangles. We also looked at queuing on the driveway, on the Fairview Ave, that queues back past the driveway. And we also looked at queuing on, on Green Street, that currently queues past the driveway. Right, on average, you got three to six vehicles with, uh, on Fairview Ave, with a 95th percentile queue of about six to 12 vehicles. So, it can stack up up to approximately 12 vehicles on Fairview. And then on Green Street, it's a little less on, uh, on the Eastbound Left Turn, so the, the queuing is, is not as bad as it is on Fairview. Um, based on the simulations that we, that we watched and based on observations, the queuing will, will extend past the driveway, you know, 60 to 80% of the time. But once the, the intersection turns green and the phase allows the traffic to dissipate through the intersection, there are adequate caps to get people in and out of the site. And that's, that's happening today, and it will, it'll continue to happen in the future just because we're not adding that much traffic to the proposed site. In addition, uh, just like any other intersection adjacent to a signalized location, you will get some courtesy gaps from drivers that allow people to make movements in and out. But the, our analysis shows that you don't, you would not need those courtesy gaps in order to make that, that, those movements. And, uh, just so you, you understand that we're not looking at this in a vacuum. We do simulate these intersections, um, you know, so we've got, uh... So, this is, you know, part of our simulation here, you go... You can see vehicles that'll try to make the right turn out, they'll make the right, you know, if, at, once they get the gaps, and then continue through the intersection. We had a vehicle make the right turn out of here. You see vehicles making the right turn in, and this vehicle will try to make a left. Right now, we can't make the left, because vehicles will start to queue past the site. He needs to wait until this dissipates. So, as you can see, this will continue to queue back, queue back. And eventually, when this turns green, they'll be able to make the left turn out. So, these are the types of analysis we do. It turned green, they queued, it allowed that one vehicle to exit, and then, once the, the signal turns red again, it'll start to queue back again. So, those are the types of analysis that we do in order to make sure that these driveways operate adequately in the future. This is just an overall site plan, but if anyone has any questions in terms of access where the driveways are. Uh, but that's a, pretty much a summary of the traffic study that we've done today. Uh, as Chuck noted, we did get this, uh, few comments, and I, first time I saw them was today, was talking about restricting access at this location here. So, we'll have to work with, through DOT to see what sort of restrictions they, they really wanna move forward with, and, you know, we'll, you know, update our study as, as appropriate once we talk to DOT.
Would you be willing to make this PowerPoint available, Tucker?
Sure.
That'd be great.
So, just for the record, so, what I think I missed for you to say is that the current intersection is safe, and once you do this, it will remain safe and will be...
In terms of delay, the delay is not, it does not create a failing condition. Safety is different than delay, so...
Okay, could you make a statement about safe? Would you be willing to say that it is safe now and after this is done?
We have done, we have not done a detailed safety assessment. Uh, we did request accidents at this location, but we've not broken them down, if that's something the board wants. We can definitely look at the types of accidents that are, have been experienced at this intersection in the past and determine, is it a result of the operations of the signals? Is it a result of the, uh, the driveways themselves? We've actually had the MP104s, which is the detailed police report. So, we could sift through those and see what types of accidents are being experienced at this intersection in the past and determine whether or not, uh, the driveways would contribute to that in the future. So, that is something we could provide to the, to the board in the future.
Do you have, uh, moderate pedestrian traffic? Because that's a difficult intersection.
We did observe pedestrians, and we noted how many pedestrians we did see in, in the study. I mean, I, I will qualify that with, that we did observe this at the end of November, so it's not peak summertime, so we didn't get as many pedestrians as, you know, you may get when it's a little nicer up. Um, but, you know, if Stewarts is wanting to install some pedestrian accommodations, then, you know, that would accommodate pedestrians on, you know, crossing either concurrently with traffic or through an exclusive pedestrian phase. We'd have to do some additional analysis and talk to DOT to see what their preferred method of pedestrian crossing is. Uh, you know, do they, you know, concurrent crossing is when the, the, the signal goes green on one approach and you kinda cross with it. and you can kind of cross with the signal. An exclusive pedestrian phase would be when the entire signal just shuts down and pedestrians can walk on any approach they want. So we'd have to take a look to see how efficient the signal is and whether or not, you know, adding that phase to the signal would increase delay to the point where you would, you know, maybe start to get some failing movements because you, had you, I guess, steal green time from the traffic movements to provide them for the pedestrians.
Actually, follow that question. Do you guys do an assessment of pedestrian activity boosted because of your?
No, because we can't, we can't tell when the customer comes in if it's a pedestrian or if they came from a car. So we don't track increased, you know, pedestrian. One of the things that we discussed pretty early on was, is there a lack of pedestrian activity because the intersection is so bad? Or do people just not, you know, just not walk in this area? So, I mean, I think the pedestrian accommodation will incentivize people to, let's build it and they'll come and palin.
Did you want a safety assessment?
Well, what do you all think? My sense is this is not a dangerous intersection. And reading the reports that I've seen, I don't have a sense that there's ever been a serious accident in the intersection. And I ask because there's a kind of generally expressed opinion that the intersection feels unsafe. So I think it would be interesting to, then let's do a safety assessment. Is that okay?
I mean, fair point.
All right, I think it would be helpful.
I think, I mean, then combing through, you know, somewhat quickly, I think you're going to find a lot of rear end, you know, accidents. I don't think there's anything completely catastrophic, I think.
I don't think we're looking for a huge assessment of these, just estimation of how many accidents per year, what type vendors, you know, on breakers, whatever. And your opinion on what this will do to that accident.
It might help the license concerns if it's a positive report.
Yeah, and one of the things I think you'll find is if you do have left turning movements with rear end accidents and you restrict left turning movements, accidents go away.
Yeah, it sort of goes hand in hand with the DOT report. So I think that would all be useful.
Or we does better.
So our goal would be to improve safety, improve pedestrian access, and beautify the intersection, and avoid excessive overdesign of the traffic.
Actually, that's a question that I have. What would take this from a C to a C plus or a B? What interventions could be possible?
The, right now, the signal operates pretty inefficiently. It's a pre-time signal, meaning that there's no actuation. So if someone pulls up, the signal's not recognizing them. And if, say, there's no traffic on the Westbound side, it's not automatically trying to get over to, to serve the Eastbound side. You could put in some sort of actuation to do that, where it gets a little more responsive and that would improve operations and in terms of just improving the basing of it. Right now, the signal just doesn't have the capability to do that. So it just kind of runs on, almost like a clock, where every 25 seconds to 35 seconds, it just serves separate lights.
And what municipality is responsible for that signal? Is it the city or DOT?
I'm unclear who owns the signal and who maintains it and who is responsible for it. The city owns it?
So, so if that was a recommendation, which it seems as though you're making, then it would be, what's the process for making that? In general, what would be the process for making that kind of a recommendation? It would be something that would?
I'm not saying it's a recommendation because the signal will operate similar to the way it is now. So if you're talking about improving the existing edition, whose responsibility is that? So that's not my, that's not my call to say who's responsible to upgrade that signal.
Yeah, and it's also not tied to the Stewart, I mean?
No, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, I think the city, that their discretion would undertake that.
But that would entail, you know, putting loops into the, or in the, in the road or some sort of microwave detention on the poles. So it would involve some signal work and potentially replacing signal heads and things like that, so.
Well, if that's it for the board, I think we can open it up to public comments and questions. So, public?
Yeah, a question. I, I live right over there.
Could you add a question?
Sorry, my name's Kurt Wayman. I live over on Fairview, almost diagonally across from the Stewart's. I'm really surprised to hear people even questioning whether this is a safe intersection or not because it's not. Just from a pedestrian point of view, I don't drive much because I like to walk over around Hudson, like most people here do. And I just, it's not safe. I have to wait to cross the street. There's no pedestrian cross, crosswalk, you have to go around to the other side of the intersection just to get across. There's, there's no pedestrian crosswalks between the intersection and Green Court, I don't think there are. There are children coming, going from school, there are families, there are people going to work and back. It's just a crazy intersection. There's not a walk sign or anything, it's just, and the cars, they don't, I mean, it says 30 miles an hour, but that is not enforced. People do not do 30 miles an hour in that intersection. It's just, it's not safe. I know it's my opinion, but I do live right there and I just, I feel very unsafe crossing that intersection at any, any time of day or night. I do have a question about the design of the four-foot-high vinyl fence that was described. That, I guess its purpose is to stop headbeams from bothering people who live in that area. I didn't hear any talk about the level of lighting underneath the canopy, where the pumps are, or on storefront, anything like that. I assume if this whole thing is doubling in size, there's going to be a significant amount of light added to this intersection. And, you know, obviously, people are trying to sleep at night. And I already have to lower my blades, my window shades at night because of one street light that's across the street from me. And it's not even a store. And what's going to happen when this whole thing gets, it's going to be like bright as day at night. And no one in the area is going to be able to sleep. And that leads to, obviously, it's a health issue because if you can't sleep, I'm already lacking sleep, I'm already going nuts. What's going to happen to me when I can't sleep even, you know, less than I am now? There's, there's a lot that's not being talked about here that I think ought to be talked about. I think people have concerns and I think that the whole, I don't know why we're tying up the issue of public safety or pedestrian safety with Stewart's desire to expand their business. These two issues shouldn't be tangled up with each other. You guys shouldn't be depending on Stewart's to make improvements that makes the intersection safe for the people who live in Hudson. We should be doing that anyway, that's our obligation, right? I mean, we should be making it safer for pedestrians. Completely apart from what Stewart's is doing, right? That's one discussion. Then there's another discussion, which I've already been talking about, how Stewart's is going to be impacting the people who live in that area. So that's some concerns of mine. I have a whole notebook full, but I'll just sit down now and let someone else talk.
What I would, what I would prefer to do is I would prefer to let everyone kind of speak and then, obviously, you know, we submitted a lighting plan. I can go through that to address this individual's concerns. But if the, if three more people speak to lighting, I'd rather answer all of their questions at once versus individualizing.
Michael, sorry, it's all Fairview Ave. As far as the lighting, I believe number 10 Fairview 12, all the way down to 24 or 26, 28. All those houses are on the same level. I can stand on my front porch and I can look all the way down Fairview Ave and down by block and see on everybody's front porch what's going on. The lights on the canopy are low enough, they're at eye level with people's living room. So 12, 14, 18, 20 Fairview, 22 Fairview, nobody has their front curtains open at night. Everybody has their blinds down because those lights are coming right into the living room. They need to be 30 feet high or the canopy has to be built around the side so that the light's not going across Fairview Ave. You know, we speak here about, oh, Green Street's going to get an eight-foot wall. I can't build a fence higher than six feet, you know? I can't, I can't do stockade fence on the backside of my house. Six feet. Oh, and now we're going to get an eight-foot concrete wall and they're going to do something about the lighting to protect people, protect the lights from shining down Green Street. And my big question here is I'm happy Stewart's wants to come in and make a nice new shiny store. God bless them, okay? It'll look better because the store that's there now looks like that. And we're discussing the traffic here and we're discussing the safety. I wanted to know who gave the permission and said it's okay that we're going to have four fueling stations? Has that been approved? Has that been a given since the get-go, when the city and planning and the city council approved all of this? That, oh yeah, you can have a new store and, you know, that's fine. And that was the ordinance, I believe, city council voted on. Okay, yeah, you guys go ahead Stewart's, you can buy the two buildings next door and build your store. Did that come with a guarantee, like on the side, like, oh yeah, you get four gas pumps with it too? Because this is the elephant in the room right now.
Well, and then if it is, I mean, this, since I will interject, there's two gas pumps there now that have four fueling positions. And we proposed two gas pumps that have four fueling positions. So there's no net increase in the number of fueling positions.
And I will comment that the original proposal had three fueling positions and reduced it back. So they're beating the current standard, not increasing.
So under this canopy, we're going to only have?
Two pumps.
Two pumps. And there's not going to be, you know, on your seat on your gas pump, if you're not doing diesel. One side, you got hose coming out one side of the square box. There's a hose coming out, well, three hoses coming out one side of the box. And three hoses coming outside of the other side of the box. Right, you're pulling it in the gas station, unleaded, or, you know, premium, big red.
It's one hose, it's just three choices. Yeah, so what you have is you have 87.
Okay, so one on each side of four pumps is a fueling station.
Yeah, but it's one on each side of two pumps, so it's four fueling stations. It's on the map, I mean.
I definitely know what you're saying, but they actually are not increasing any of the pumps.
One, two, three, four.
And now you have two. There's only two gas pumps over there.
You're right.
There's only two gas pumps.
You're right.
There's going to be two pumps or four pumps?
Two pumps.
So what happens is like you're saying, if I stand on this side of the table? Ooh, I just closed that. Or if I stand on, or if I stand on this side of the table, it's still one table, right? So like I'm on this side, now I'm on this side, but it's still one table. Like, it's the same thing for fueling, so you can go one, two, three, four.
There are two pumps and four fueling stations. A total of four cars can be fueling at one time, which is what they have now.
It's, it's three buttons that we check.
Yeah, okay, so.
But why, so why is this such a larger canopy?
That's assuming. Okay, I understand your, your table point here, okay? There's your table and that table has one hose coming out, the way it is now. Well, what's to stop anyone from putting a gas pump that has a hose on each side? Now you have gas, see?
I can't do it.
You see, you see, you see where I'm going with this?
No.
When I pull into the Hess station?
Could you put the site plan back up?
When I pull into the Hess station, there's a hose on each side. And right now, they have, at Stewart's, only one hose coming out.
Right, right, here we go. Here's the site plan, here's a pen. You, you show us what, and I'm not trying to, I'm being very sincere here. One, two, three, four. Now, it doesn't matter how many hoses there are, because if you have a vehicle parked in spot one, another vehicle couldn't obtain the same space because you can't, that's the second law of physics. You know, two objects can obtain the same space at the same time. It doesn't matter how many hoses you have, because you have 87 and 91, or 90, yeah, 91 octane gas and it's mixed at the dispenser for 89 octane. It's not three separate hoses, like, you, is that what you're getting at?
No.
Okay, okay.
What you have now, I'll stand up with you Stewart, everybody.
You can go to the board and draw, I mean, I can't figure it out.
What we have now at Stewart's is one pump with one hose. And it can take care of one car at a time, whether it's on this side or whether it's on this side.
No. That's not, that's not true.
That's not correct. I'm not trying to like, no one else in the room agrees with you. I don't think so.
If we double the number of pumps?
But we're not.
Yeah, so what you're telling me, there's, there's two, there's four underneath your canopy?
There are two pumps and each pump has a life and a life station. Like now, just exactly like now. If you go there now, I can get on either side of the island and I can fill from one side to the other. So let's talk about car positions. There are currently, correct me if I'm wrong, four car positions possible. And when this is all done, redone new Stewart's, there will still be a total of four car positions because Stewart's already agreed to reduce by two in the neighborhood. They were going for six, now they're back to four.
Will it, this area that's being covered, the Hess station, will it be as big as Hess? Because Hess has eight fueling stations with four pumps.
We're not doing that, that's not in this plan.
Didn't.
All right, I'm just trying to understand, on the topic of the larger trucks that are going to be pulling in here to gas up, that's going to be, the amount of trucks gassing at this location is probably going to increase whether or not the traffic is increased or not, right? Will there be more trucks pulling in here?
They were talking about fuel trucks making deliveries, is that the question?
So there's not going to be just generally several trucks pulling in?
Yeah, and they don't have diesel, so they, you know.
Well, momentarily, I mean, we don't have high-flow diesel, I mean, the potential exists that we would.
I'm sorry, you don't have?
We don't, we don't have high-flow diesel. I mean, the potential exists that we would do low-flow diesel for, you know, your, yeah, I mean, your.
Diesel vehicles.
Diesel vehicles, like, but that would occupy the same fueling position. So it might be an alternative handle, but it won't be an additional fueling position.
But would it bring in, would it bring in trucks to get, to get?
No.
Just diesel cars and stuff?
I mean, any other, it would be any other truck that would try to navigate for lunch. It wouldn't be like a truck stop.
Okay, do you want to address, sorry?
No, I'm not, I don't know. The plantings, so far, the landscape company out of Sarasota that takes care of Stewart's landscaping is a failure. It's wood chips. Went here to have three marigolds. You get a little tray for a dollar eighty-nine, you get six. Hudson got four. All right? That's their landscaping. Now, the trees here, I see four trees. Can we specify in this plan that we're getting full-size trees? Like, we don't want any trees that are three feet tall, whatever a landscaper can buy cheap. And they come in, stick them in the ground, and then they turn into galloway trees, you know, that are just little skinny sticks there that haven't grown in 15 years. You know, can we specify it in, in the, in the plant, you know? You don't get your.
Well, yes, they specify.
We want real trees.
They specify three and a half inch caliper, which is a reasonable size. You know, if you put too big a tree in the ground, half the time it dies because you've constrained the root system. So we can discuss this at length later on. But the idea, I believe, a three and a half inch tree is large enough so that everybody would agree that they put a real tree there, but it's small enough so it can develop a set of roots, you know, independent of being constrained in a, in a root ball. So I don't know, you know, if we wanted bigger trees, we could sort of see about it. My observation is these sidewalk maples, they've got, they've got about a six to eight inch annual growth, so they're going to grow real fast. But, you know, sure, I'm sure Chuck sees you going, he'll give you a four-inch caliper. What do you think?
Can, can we get an assurance on the lighting that it's not going to cross Fairview Ave and enter into everyone's liver?
This one's feeling.
Yeah, I'll come back to lighting as a general topic, um, at the end of everyone else's.
We have a streetlight problem there now.
Not my problem.
Okay, but that's not the city, but we also have a lighting problem at Stewart's.
Okay, can we, do you wanna say something?
Yes, um, in your simulation, does that account for human error? Because it just seemed like what it would be like in a perfect world. Because I know you said eighty-eight cars now for traffic and adding another sixty-six after the renovation.
Yes.
So does that account for human error when driving? Because it really doesn't go like that.
Human error, and when people are driving their cars.
Yeah, because, I mean, everybody's not gonna be going the same miles per hour, and it's, you're adding in sixty-six.
Yes, the simulation takes into account different driver behaviors. So if there's someone that's ninety years old, they drive slower, or someone that's sixteen, they drive faster. It has different variation for driver characteristics. It does take that into account. But it's not going to have a car off-track into a lane and make an improper turn. But it's essentially trying to determine how much average delay. There's always gonna be little variances, but this is not... The, I guess, the thresholds here are not to the point where we're so close to an app, where something's failing, where a level service B's and C's and, you know, you know, even if there is a margin of error of ten percent, it's not gonna throw this intersection for that, I guess is my opinion.
And my next question is, the safety assessment, are you guys gonna make that available to the council or to the public? Um, just because there's a lot of constituents who feel like that corner is not safe. I've never had an accident there, but I've had a ton of close calls, um, so I just wanna know if that would be available to the public.
Yes, absolutely, and we're hoping somehow in all of this to get a green island, some really good pedestrian crosswalks, and some traffic calming elements that will make the, but that's larger than just Stewart's. That goes into, yeah.
But shouldn't that be considered before all this happens?
Thank you.
But this just seems backwards to me.
Well, I'm not sure I understand the question. Why?
See, you mentioned that there's already thoughts of having a green island, having crosswalks and all these things. But what Stewart's does here is gonna impact the ability to do all those things, right?
Well, speaking very personally, given what they have now, which is a kind of endless access apron, that even at the corner, if I remember correctly, you can just drive in and out there. They've pushed the entrances to the drive area as far out as possible and created what doesn't exist now, which is a green corner. And when I look at that corner and I line it up with the sidewalks across the street, for the first time, I imagine we could have a bus walk that arrives at a sidewalk and not a curb cut. So I think my answer to you is, the planning board has already been working with Stewart's to get this site plan to a point where we could plug in the kind of improvements to the intersection that you're talking about. But Stewart's is not, you know, their property line is their property line. They don't go past that. We're just trying to negotiate a solution that allows the city to add enhancements.
It just feels like the city is relying too much on what a corporate company wants to do for its own, you know, from a business point of view, instead of thinking about the long-term effects of what this kind of change would have on Hudson as a city. I mean, if Stewart, I mean, everyone's watching this. Everyone's watching to see what happens here, right? So we all know what happened up the street in Fairview, where we have all those strip malls and all those gas, like twelve gas stations up there, not too far away. If Stewart's doubles in size, what do we have? Okay, so that brings a lot of what's happening that way into Hudson, because if you're gonna have a great big parking lot on a corner, which is great, terrific. Then you look at other businesses that are between Stewart's and where we are right now. But there is, because there are other gas stations. They're not huge. They're small too. They probably have the same wants and needs as Stewart's has. So on Green Street, you have a Speedway. It's got a lot of pumps, but it's got a teeny tiny little store. I'm sure they're watching to see what happens here. I'm sure they would love to tear down a building and double their size. Then, once they do that, then there's a sit-go across the street from the town square park on Seven Hundred Block. They're about this big.
I, I, I mean, so.
So what's gonna stop them from wanting to do the same thing? It's just gonna keep coming.
I think there's, um, again, I'd rather not interject. I mean, let's say that the council enacted a local law that dealt with historic non-conforming uses in the city. I mean, that Stewart's has been there since nineteen seventy-three. So for forty-five years, it's operated, and the zoning has essentially changed around it. Now, what happened is, I think some of the properties you're speaking to are not even in the city. I think they're in the town of Greenport. And the city enacted one local law that addressed non-conforming uses. At one point, an overlay district was, um, forwarded, and that was denied. So the adjoining houses can't become commercial unless there's, again, a legislative adoption by the city council. So some of those concerns aren't actually founded in what can proceed.
What variance did Stewart's get from the zoning law?
I'm, I mean, that's, that's like, I mean, the zoning has changed, allowing the one-time expansion of a non-conforming use. It's not a zoning variance. So we're established in the, where we have an adopted right to the property and the site plan through the legislation. It's not, it's not an instance where a variance would obtain. Any other? Yes.
Oh, yes. I just wanna comment, my name's Craig Hay, I'm the city code official, but I'm not gonna talk on behalf of that. I just wanna hit a little bit on your safety concerns. Prior to being a code official, I'm also a member of the City Hudson Fire Department, have been for thirty-two years. Out of that thirty-two years, fifteen of them I was a lieutenant and a captain, eight of them I was a chief officer. And the chief officer position I held from two thousand six to two thousand fourteen. Just to give you a little bit of an insight, that intersection, in the intersection, off the top of my head, I can count on one hand how many personal injury, traffic accidents we had at that intersection. We had them beyond the intersection, we've had them before the intersection, but not in the intersection. You could probably add a few more numbers of the accidents that actually occurred in the parking lot. So again, in eight years, there hasn't been, to my knowledge, one personal injury involving a car and a pedestrian. So that's as it's currently said. And the reason I wanna say this, because there is a safety concern, and the fire department has a safety concern, and I'm sure the police department does as well. But it's already been proposed that at best, this intersection is gonna be made better. There's safety concerns that DOT is looking at, I'm sure the fire chiefs are looking at, DOT is looking at, and Storks is looking at as well. So again, I'm not trying to say either way what goes on and who does what, but I can say from experience, as a lifelong resident of this city and a fire chief officer, that there's been very minimal safety issues in that intersection. And then reports are all formidable. You can get them through the fire chief's office. I can tell you, for eight years, I probably signed most of them. And out of that, there's probably been maybe a half a dozen.
Yeah, a quick follow-up to that. You said that there have been how many personal injury accidents?
Off the top of my head, if I had to guess, less than half a dozen.
How many accidents?
Can't answer that, because the fire department don't go to non-personal injury accidents unless they're requested by police.
But at a slow-moving intersection, there would probably not be many personal injury accidents. There would probably be a lot more accidents.
And that would be something that the police department would have on record. They have to. But again, just knowledgeable as a fire chief officer, and when we're talking about public safety, there's concerns there over the course of the years. And again, I mean, Mr. Sawyer, you live right there.
You don't want accidents.
Exactly. You know, how many people get run over by cars there? How many fender benders? You see what I'm saying? So that's now. This company and DOT, and I'm assuming Department of Public Works is gonna be involved, they're gonna make it better. I just wanted to put that out there as a concern. Maybe that'll help train the thought and give you a little bit more rest. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we are now, we have a safety, uh...
Safety assessment.
Which would include that any particular?
I think it's all, it's all.
Yes, it'll be all, you request it from DOT, and they give you, you know, non-reportable accidents, which are less than a thousand dollars, they give you, you know, personal injury, they give you everything.
Well, you can tell there's a public perception that the intersection is not safe. There seems to be some disagreement. We do believe the intersection will be safer once we've been able to affect some design changes. So, you know, it's just part of the process. Don, did you have a?
Yep, Don Moore, just a point of information. This has come up before about who controls the traffic lights. And I just went back and forth with the superintendent of Public Works. It's all the city. DOT is not involved in any jurisdictional issues with the traffic signals in the city or there.
So. Just, just, just again, reference, that's just the signals though. So the, the access would be.
It's real, it'd be a jurisdiction.
But if we wanted to improve what came, sequences, whatever, the city, that's entirely a city.
Eight years ago, six, seven, eight years ago, a truck took out the telephone pole that supported the traffic light on that corner in front of my house. That pole had been there since I bought the house, well, my family bought the house in nineteen fifty-eight. Truck finally took it out. Boom. So they put a temporary pole in my front lawn, six or seven years ago. It's still there. Rob Perry told me that it was only temporary, that he had gotten a metal pole from the county that he had down on, uh, down by the sewer plant, that he had, and they were gonna stick that pole, because they can't stick that pole in my front lawn. Uh, now, there's a cable that's supporting the leaning pole that's holding up the traffic light that's temporary. Rob Perry told me, he says, the city can come in and put that pole in your front lawn, you can't do nothing about it. But you can't, we can't put that cable in your front lawn. It's too far down. So I told him, you do not have permission to put that cable in my front lawn. It's still there. It's been six or seven, eight years. Pat McKenna, who owns number ten, I, he, at that time, he was working upstairs in this building in parking. And I think maybe he told Rob that, hey, he didn't want that big metal pole in his front yard, because that front pole, that pole was gonna be there, and it's gonna have a big arm out over into the intersection to hang the traffic light. So right now, what you have up there is this temporary situation. I don't know what's up with Mr. Perry. You know, and his, and his wire that's in my front lawn, that's an eyesore, that I have to mow around. Been there six, eight years. This is the situation going on with a couple of problems at Fairview. Also, the other major safety problem, and you got a big one up there now, right in front of my house, is that corner that gets run over by cars and trucks all day long. There's a giant hole there in the front now. Cars fall into it and chase my house. That's a problem. But, you know, we'll get back to the Stewart's.
We're having mission reading here, you know, soon.
I wanna ask you one, one question on your behalf, because I feel your frustration, and I don't criticize you for it at all. Who, we have so many wonderful people here tonight that know the answer to this. Who does he go to for these problems? Because this is not a Stewart's issue. Who does he talk to?
Over there.
Who should, who, Tom, anybody?
I'm literally getting out of the way. She already got contact with everyone else but me.
And it should be for going off track, but I do that, because we've gotten off track, and people are thinking that the new Stewart's, when I came to a meeting a year ago, the new Stewart's was gonna solve all the problems that we have at their new Green Street.
It is giving us the opportunity to, to recognize some issues, like the traffic lights and like you're speaking of. And if there is a corner being eaten up because Craig's sitting at, it will give the city a renewed interest in fixing that stuff. But that's not.
I know, that's not your problem.
But Stewart's is actually helping in a way with that.
I know it's not your problem, but when the, when the deal was sold to me.
Who does he go to? Who does he go to?
Yeah, I mean, I can answer that one. I mean, really, it would be a question that he would wanna posit with Rob Perry. I've already made a note, but this is being what's been said, I can have a conversation, because there'll be connection with the DOT modifications. We're certainly gonna wanna have the city look ahead.
Okay, so our, the, the wonderful attorney is here, where the planning board is making a note, and he's gonna check into it.
Okay, I just got sidetracked, because originally, when this deal was sold a year ago, it was like, oh, Stewart's is gonna solve all the problems at Fairview and Green. And nobody talks about what the problems are anymore. Does that bless Stewart's for a wonderful new store?
Okay, Peter, Peter Young, five twelve, Warren. This is a bit of a peripheral issue, but as long as this intersection's on your plate, I thought it might be worth mentioning. Given the proximity to the hospital of that intersection, presumably there are some ambulance traffic through there. I don't have any data or any numbers. But I'm wondering if it makes sense for the board to get a little input in from, through the local ambulance companies as to what challenges they might have experienced navigating that intersection, especially under emergency conditions. Maybe they have a rate.
I, I think what this begs for is for the planning board to make the intersection an objective study and to work with the appropriate members of the city government to see what measures we can make to improve it. But tonight, we're here to talk about the Stewart's proposal in and of itself. So I apologize, but we have such a big agenda tonight. I think we're gonna have to speed this along. So if no one out there has any other, okay, Matthew, yes, please.
Hi, I'm Matthew Frederick. I'm an architect. Some of you might have seen my blog post. I know a few of you did, and Chuck worked, contacted me. I appreciate that. There's a number of things that are on here. If any of you want to copy this, you can see it, or you can just go to my blog. Some recommendations to improve the site. But a point I wanted to make, and I referenced Walter's axiom, not letting perfect be the enemy of the good. I'm not sure, you know, good is hard to define, to define, and I think some folks are trying to throw quantitative things at you when the, when the issue here is really qualitative. So how many pumps? How many injuries? You know, people are trying to find something really tangible. But I mean, this is going to be better in some ways, this intersection. I think it's gonna be worse in a lot of ways. It's gonna be more open, there's gonna be more paving, there's gonna be more scattered light, and so on. What I'm asking, among other things, but in my blog post, I was asking that you balance the bad things in some ways by, in particular, turning this into a street-facing building that accepts walk-up traffic and makes the sidewalk a friendly place. As soon as you face an entrance to the parking lot, you're announcing that this is a piece of suburbia stuck into the city. And, you know, what I suggested was a corner entrance that would face the street. It looks much more like an urban building. I also suggested a walk-up ice cream window. I don't wanna push that issue too much, but I understand that Stewart's is planning to build, if I'm not mistaken, something like, build or rebuild something like fifty stores, and, well, not true?
No.
Not true.
You are expanded, yeah? Aren't you expanded? All of the stores?
I'm over here, yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Shall I repeat it or?
And it's not fifty.
What is it? What is that?
It's five and a half, twenty.
Well, but I don't know where I got fifty. I'll blame somebody else there. I'll blame another blogger. But this is a chance to, I think, practice making a more appropriate, a community-appropriate building, and to make a few small gestures. There are a number of things to tie together here that I don't think we can negotiate, looking at engineering plans. And by the way, this is a problem that we do have with review procedures, is that the community sees engineering plans, and it feels like all the decisions have been made, and now we have to talk you out of it, and there we go, throwing obstructions at you. So I'm trying to just ask that we back up a little bit and just try to deal with it on a bit more of a schematic level, make sure that everybody understands how we got where we are, and that we can make a friendlier urban building. I don't think you guys have to give up what's important to you, but I do think you should give us a few things.
Just, thank you. One point of clarification, Matt, I'm not sure this was clear. My understanding is that the entrance on the street is a real entrance, that it's not, as in the joy store, a, you know, canopy that has a window. It's actually a door. I don't know if that changes your perception or not.
It doesn't, and I, if you don't mind, I'll, can I, can I address that?
I did look at your blog, but I didn't bring it out. Could we, could we have the board have a couple of, of us?
Did you share that?
If there's any. So there have been studies done as far as store security, for example, with one door versus two. And there's a sweet spot where one door works. If you add a second door, you have much more theft until the store reaches a certain footprint size, which is way bigger than thirty-seven hundred feet. Because when the store gets big enough, you then have more employees and you can watch two doors. So, uh, so what I'm suggesting is building it in a lot of ways is better for not just the street, but for Stewart's. There would be more merchandising space inside with one door instead of two. Again, it's a friendlier building. I think it's a more interesting building. It's not even gonna cost a hundredth of a cent on each gallon of milk. It's not even gonna cost a hundredth of a cent on each gallon of milk. And by the way...
In my defense, though, with the exception of the corner door, it is almost exactly the same building. I mean, if you look at your points, one through six, you know, one was a new landscape in Traffic Island, which I've agreed, we'll go to DOT with. Two was a revised radius transition to accommodate greenery, which we show on the corner, we're showing on the screen. The three was the pedestrian accommodation, which I've more than once agreed that we will make. Four was the geometry tweaks, which I, you know, didn't necessarily completely understand. And via our email exchange, you said that you understood that it's not completely perpendicular. Five was the two-story flat roof, which we have given. And then, six was the landscaping of our side, which was four mature trees, which we have shown, and the landscaping in almost the exact situation you've proposed it. So, the only thing that we're not necessarily agreeing with is the corner door. And I think that the corner door, from an internal operations perspective, has more flaws than the two doors.
You gotta stop building them, 'cause you haven't.
We did stop building them. That's why I'm promoting two doors.
If I could talk to you about it outside of the room, I'd appreciate it. But if this building, if you see it as not much different from what you're proposing, then why not do it? This is, you know, I come at this from an urban design perspective. So, not from a Stewart's perspective. So, I'm trying to speak to the community. I don't mean everybody agrees with me here. But I am thinking about the folks that live across the street that walk up to this facility, not the ones that drive to it.
Yeah. Well, thank you for doing this, Matt, too. This is really terrific. It's so helpful when somebody does something disruptive.
And I did say, in my email, I said the same thing. I mean, I might not agree with all of his points, but obviously with someone who did take, instead of just saying no, they said, "No, but if here are some recommendations you should consider." I think some of which we meant and some of which we might just have to agree.
So, I'm changing my motto to "the better is the enemy of the bad."
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I appreciate the fact that there was a notion of making the space more community-friendly and more, again, I think we tried to repeat this part of it, which is, you're a residential neighborhood. Normally, it's a pure business that is largely in suburban areas and more exurban areas. This is a very urban area that...
You know, it's funny people say that, but we have six stores in Albany. We have six stores in Troy. You know, we have...
If I can finish.
Yeah, I know what I'm saying.
My point is that I appreciate the gesture of course making it more of a place that people in the neighborhood feel like it's a neighborhood location where you can walk up and enjoy ice cream and have it as a less of a suburban-style gas station and more of a neighborhood location.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I did when, you know, became the recommendation of the planning board from the board to the city councils, I read the sprawl repair manual. And when you read the sprawl repair manual, they speak of the convenience store as a nodal component of both community or neighborhood. I mean, Stewart's, unlike some of the competitors that are referenced, Stewart's comes from a milk, egg, bread. You know, that was the basis of the business. I mean, this is actually the first Stewart's that ever had gas.
Incredible.
That ever had gas.
This one?
Yeah. It was an Esso station in 1973.
Okay. Yes. I don't really...
Don't get me started.
Would you tell us your name?
Cynthia Lambert. I live on Green Street. I'm chagrined that we're even having this conversation and that this whole thing has even gotten this far because I don't know what Hudson really has to gain by having a bigger and better Stewart's. I have nothing against Stewart's. I love their ice cream. But rezoning sets a bad precedent. Tearing down houses sets a very bad precedent. It's a residential neighborhood. It used to be completely residential with no commercial. And little by little, we eroded that until it's becoming almost a commercial street. And I don't think that's a very good idea. Every day, I read about houses being torn down and houses being condemned, houses falling down. We're losing Hudson. We're losing what people love about Hudson. And that's the residential quality, our housing stock, the charm of the city. And making a bigger and better Stewart's and a bigger and better McDonald's on Fairview is not the way to go.
Nick?
Yeah, I had a question and I apologize if you've already gone over this, but I was here for some of the early meetings and then I missed some. And I expressed some similar concerns to Cynthia. And I felt that there was a notion at one point as maybe part of the host benefit agreement of possibly creating a fund that included something for affordable housing or something along those lines. I wonder if that was still on the table, if that was still a part of this.
So, the overall fund would be negotiated by Stewart's and the common council. So, whatever the, I mean, I think it's, an immediate launching point is the pedestrian accommodation because we don't see that as something we can do without the host community benefit. Anything after that would be for the discretion of the council, but there has to be some type of nexus to, you know, what we're mitigating. So, is it housing and, you know, the removal of those two houses? Or is it non-conforming uses and the need for an updated zoning? I mean, those are, that's the legislative discretion of the council.
But hasn't the council already approved this?
No. No, the council has not. The council has approved the zoning, which enables Stewart's to pursue the site plan. Upon the site plan approval, Stewart's will have to enter into the host community benefit with the council. So, after this, DOT's approval, which will somewhat happen simultaneously, we will then go back to the council and negotiate the host community benefit. And that's where things like Mark's estimate on how much the pedestrian improvement would be, the design fee, and then whatever other elements are added would be negotiated.
But that could still be on the table to create a fund to create as much affordable housing as is possibly being taken away?
I mean, it's kind of just a dollar amount. What the council decides to direct the funds toward is something of their choosing. There's a discretionary board.
Thank you.
This board can't do that.
No, no, I understand.
Well, some people don't understand that that this board actually can't enter into the host community benefit. It has to be through the council.
No, I didn't understand that. So, that was, thanks for pointing.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Susan O'Ron. I live at 24 Fairview. I've already been to the Department of Public Works. We referred you to the police. The police referred me back to the Department of Public Works when I spoke to Rob Perry about this. Right now, I'm Fairview. People coming south on Route 9. When you get to the intersection, there's a lane that turns right and goes down Green Street. There's a lane that goes straight up Fairview or has the option of going east on Green Street. And then, there's a northbound lane that comes north. So, people coming south start queuing up for those two, either Green Street or Upper Fairview lanes. And the parking starts about mid-block on Fairview. And you've got the two little white, like, whatever you call them, trucks starting to, like, squeeze people into there. It's, people parking on the street are constantly having their cars sideswiped. I think most of them don't get reported because it's a hit-and-run. You're not even gonna report it to your insurance company or it's just, or it's just a mirror or it's just a scratch or whatever. Are you addressing some kind of... I actually wanted a line painted down the middle of the road so people would stop, like, queuing up for those two, Green Street and, Lower Green Street and Fairview lanes. So, are you gonna change the lines there to address the other or are you gonna take the parking away? Which is another big issue.
The irony is that our, as the planning board, our power over this stops at their property line. We've been asked to look at how this property is being...
No, this is gonna be an issue with traffic on the road, which I'm assuming they're gonna generate more traffic, which is gonna be, we're either gonna take away the parking on the street, which I can see thinking about that probably already, which will be a real hardship to people on the street that don't have off-street parking. Or cars will be continued to be hit.
I think this would be part of a larger traffic study that could, the planning board could play a role in that. But it really has to be involving the city's public works department, as you said, DOT, anybody else who has sway over this and it's a county truck route. They're gonna have something to say. But we can certainly note that, you know, that, I guess, my question would be, what is being proposed here that's going to make that worse? Is that what you're saying, that this proposal...
Yes. She's saying that they take away parking. I mean, I'm assuming theirs, I mean, they're gonna get more traffic.
Okay, fair enough. I mean, all we can do is look at it.
What exactly does Hudson have to gain by this? Why are we doing it? Why...
That's not for me to answer. We're the planning board. We've been asked to review a site plan, to make suggestions on how to improve it and to make sure that they meet the law. Every property owner in Hudson has the same rights. Stewart's is a property owner. If you get mad at us for listening to them and when you wanna move your fence too close to your neighbor, you want us to be nice about it. So, we're just here to serve the community. And in my estimation, we're trying to do the best Stewart's we can and want people to come from all over the United States to see what an amazing Stewart's is.
But this is really a question for the... More parking on the street. So, more people getting sideswiped, their parks on the street.
Good point, alright.
Suggest that we get back to the lighting?
Yeah, the lighting. That's really...
Is it done? Is it done?
I just want to... This is what happens here. I could definitely do that. Obviously, I've lived in a lot of different places in the country. Hudson is so community-based in a way that I've never seen before. It's really hard for the residents in this area to react to this because they don't understand it. The reason why they don't understand it is because we're looking at plot plan and it's like, and dream it. Like, we're not seeing this, right? We need to see more of this so we know how to react to it. We need the tools to understand what's being proposed. We don't have those tools right now.
What's the difference between that and that?
That's my first time seeing that. I haven't seen that anywhere else. I know we can download a PowerPoint somehow, but there needs to be a much easier way for the general public to understand what's going on here. And right now, I don't feel like we have that. Thank you.
So, you have, if I could take you back to the lighting issues? I've had a couple of you have, this is actually something we can use on that. So, do you wanna address that again or...
I'm just concerned that with a larger Stewart's and a larger parking lot and a larger canopy, it's gonna be so much brighter at night. And anyone who lives within the catch-throw of that place is just not gonna be able to have peace of mind at night because of the brightness. So, that's, to anyone concerned.
So, one of the concerns about lighting is light, you know, brightness and then light escape. So, you know, if you look at a dark field, if you look at a lit anything, and let's say it's bright in comparison to the light around it.
It's always talking. It'll go.
But what we did the first time is we had come in with 60 LED bulbs. And what we've done is we reduced to the 40 LED bulbs. All fixtures are flush-mounted fixtures. So, we have to soft it and at the canopy, they're all... There's no dangling globe, which I believe there is today, which might be part of the problem for his neighbors with the light escaping onto properties across Fairview. But what the LED lighting allows us to do is to be, for the most part, there are certain instances, we have zero light escape or decimals of light escape at the property line. So, if you look across at it, will it seem bright? It will be lit, but the light will escape past the barriers that are shown on the plan.
Primary source light will escape. We have reflective light.
Correct.
Will it be less than it is now? Now, how does it compare with the...
I can't, we don't model what's there today because we're placing it. But I'm fairly certain that it's all globe fixtures judged from the age of the store. So, yes, it would be less than the... And if you also think about the fact that the canopy moving off the corner...
Farther away.
Farther away from the light. And then, we're only installing one pole light. It's not, you know, there aren't individual, the only pole light on the property is right here. So, it's not like we're putting yard lights surrounding the property. Our main focus is that the building will essentially illuminate. The building and the canopy, this driveway will be illuminated. And then, because that doesn't exist over here, the yard light is gonna illuminate that driveway.
It's very technical and scientific.
Yeah, I mean, there's, it's difficult to understand, but there's foot candles.
I mean, I have the same drawing here and thank you. I just...
So, I...
Give me an example of something I can go look at tonight that will show me what the light level's gonna be.
This light is probably 40? 40-foot candles? That's okay. Don't worry about it. This light right now is 40-foot candles, they're about, right? So, the maximum we're showing is 19.9. So, approximately half this light. So, this is probably a really 10-foot light. And the canopy height is, I believe it's 14 feet. Now, one of the issues you have with the canopy is that we use concrete underneath the canopy. So, you have a white surface. We don't have elevations on the canopy, but I believe the canopy's either 14 or 16 feet. But you have a white surface underneath the canopy. And so, the light essentially gets trapped under like this, where it just refracts back and forth versus where it hits asphalt and it dissipates into the floor.
Is there anything that can be done about that? No.
But cutting off the light source so you don't get the spread of the direct illumination is huge. And then, you talked a little bit about color temperature, which is another issue. If you have a very white light, it feels very cold, institutional and strikes the eye, it's very bright. So, if you put the color temperature down in the kind of yellow range, it just makes it feel more like nice lighting at night.
Yeah, and again, we decrease...
The light will be output more from down here.
Yeah, I don't think we decrease to the, I don't think we decrease the element.
So, there's another thing that no one's brought tonight, which kind of surprises me. And I'm sorry you can't answer this. I would say right now you can't answer it. Is there anything that can be done, any studies or any experts we can talk to who would help us know or determine or have a theory about what impact this would have on our property values? Because I can't imagine it'd be very good.
A better-looking Stewart's, wouldn't it be better than...
Well, if it's twice the size with brighter lights, I don't know.
There is data.
There is data, okay.
I, I mean, I, I can't, and I do disagree, I mean, I fundamentally disagree with the fact that a Stewart's that... I mean, if you consider the value of the real estate that has transacted surrounding the current Stewart's, and how essentially awful and dysfunctional that is in comparison to a reinvested nice Stewart's.
So I'm sorry.
But all the, all the real estate transactions occur with the Stewart's in place now, so...
No, I bought my house in December, my realtor told me not to buy it because of what's happening here. I bought it anyway, because I thought, I just thought, you know, Hudson's going to do the right thing, so I bought it. She told me not to.
I agree with you. The house across the street, on the other corner, or half the corner to your house, is now in foreclosure because they couldn't sell it. The house, the pink house a couple doors down, lingered on the market for two or three years because they couldn't sell it, because people know what's going to happen. And nobody wants to deal with the fallout of construction and the snarled traffic and the extra lights and the bigger retail establishment in what should be a residential area. So yes, it does have an effect on real estate values, very much so. Because I follow the real estate market daily, every day I look, what's sold, how much it sold for, how long it's been on the market, and I live in the neighborhood. So yes, it does have a big effect on real estate values.
There have been formal studies on this, which doesn't say that they're perfect, but yes, there is an impact. It typically extends up to about, I think it was a quarter mile or 1,200 feet or something, and then after that, there's no impact. But, you know, anecdotally, or just looking at it, how I see it, the properties immediately adjacent to this Stewart's are not in good shape. Why? Well, because if you live next to a gas station, you kind of feel like, why would I, why would I improve this property? So you ride it out, get the rent from it as long as you can without making improvements, and then eventually the gas station says, well, bye.
Maybe you told us already, but what is the estimated construction time, the time you break ground, and the time the door opens?
Somewhere between 12 and 14 weeks.
Weeks?
Weeks.
Well, okay. I think because the gent is going to be moved to move around, like, feel like the property has got a chance to come in, so... I'm kind of sure, go ahead.
The canopy, Chuck here didn't know whether it was 14 feet or 16 feet high. When it's built and it's too high, and the light is blasting the neighbors out, or there is some kind of problem over there, who do we come and see and say, hey, your canopy's too high? How do we get that lower? The construction guys from out of town are not going to listen to me, I tell you, your building is too high. Well, go tell City Hall, and City Hall says, well, geez, I don't know, they...
Chuck, can you assure us that the lowest legal height possible?
What I'll do is I'll have the elevations amended to who the building, I sort of have a sense of scale.
And the canopy.
Yeah, the canopy.
Question as well.
Will, will there be...
I mean, there'll be building compliance with the building, because it's not like we're going to submit a plan for 70, even build to 50.
Will there be a process in place to address any issues once this thing gets going? Like, hey, we did a terrible makeover here, can we do this? And another question, that little boom around grass going around the corner, is that going to be about the same width as the existing piece of landscaping that's there now? Because on, on, when you show the overhead on projector, you know, you've got this nice green script that comes around and looks pretty. And they've, they've tried that pretty little script there before, and cars run over it, and the thing gets a mud puddle.
That's a great point. So there will be interior curbing that will delineate the landscaped island from the drive path, which does not exist today. I mean, if you also think about the current site plan, you have both the, with the, with the building at, you know, running kind of north and south, and the gas on a diagonal, you have what, people trying to cheat on the outside, which, you know, this layout with the pumps at an angle actually allows vehicles to get on the outside of the gasoline canopy, in between the canopy and the landscaping, without that, you know, conflict with the landscaped island. So that, that has been...
And potentially the same width?
No, I believe it's wider, but I'll measure it.
Can we have another beat?
We're going to have a good beat. Chuck, the lighting in the canopy, that's a reset lighting, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. With the cutoff, sorry.
Canopy now, what were you going to ask me?
Yeah, I mean, we should negotiate that, I mean, that's just a question of, literally, would you type the bullet?
Yeah, okay, so this is your...
Yes, ma'am.
Could the lighting be set, so at a certain point in night, it, it went off? Or was motion-activated, or with them, or...
Yeah, well, no. It can be turned off, but it can't go motion-activated. So I'm not 100% sure, I presume the current store hours are somewhere in the range of 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. I will confirm that and, you know, make sure that I accurately represent it. The shop will go dark, the outside lights will go dark a half hour after the store closes, and will turn on again a half hour after, or before it opens. And the premise is that that way the person leaving leaves with light safely, and the person coming in enters with light, with light safely. So the outside lights do go dark, but there is a, you know, safety light for the person that come in.
And can they use the, the light that makes the least light pollution? I mean, you know...
Yeah, that's what they were, that's exactly what they were just talking about. So they're, they're, in essence, asking us to decrease the Kelvin.
So, so if the store closes at 11, or definitely most Stewart's do, then the lights on the outside...
Go dark at 11, and then there'd be, like, interior lights on, so approximately 11:30.
And the canopy lights go on as well?
Yeah.
So everything off at 11? Or, or, well, inside 11:30 of the store?
I would like to make, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn, but to keep the public hearing open, so that when we meet next time, we will continue. Okay, a motion, do I have it signed? All in favor? Any of us? Okay.